Good afternoon, everyone. We're going to go ahead and get started with our Panhandle Health District Board of Health interviews. Today's date is May 29, 2025. The time is 1:00 PM. In attendance are Commissioners Eberlein, Duncan, and Matarri. I'm going to call this meeting to order. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Actually, I think we have to correct the name spelling on Item 1D. The previous agenda said Joe. The amended agenda says Joel. So the L was kept off, so...
Okay. I move that we accept the amended agenda with a spelling correction.
Second.
Commissioner Eberlein?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chair Matarri?
Aye. Okay, we got that corrected. Public comment? Hearing none. We'll move into our business. We have Panhandle Health District Board of Health interviews. It's a discussion item. And the first person today we're going to be speaking with is Julia. Is it Mangan?
Mangan.
Great. Okay, so we have a standard set of questions that we will ask all the interview ees. And there may be additional questions that branch out as a result of the answers to these questions.
Got it.
So I'll start off with the first one.
Okay.
What is the role of the Panhandle Health District's Board of Health?
It is entrusted to develop and monitor programs that improve the health of the community.
Commissioner Duncan, did you want to ask the second one?
Sure. Do you believe nutrition or prevention should be a, should fill a bigger role in Panhandle Health District's community development?
Okay, so do I believe nutrition and...
Prevention.
Prevention. Yes, definitely. That was, has always been my model as a nurse. Nurses have a model of care. Doctors have a model of cure. And so in developing anything I ever did in, for assignments, it was always a self-care project that, I did my thesis in that. And it turned out that for self-care and breast self-exams, it had certain criteria, but those that who did self-care were able to monitor their breast and found more cancers than people who didn't. So I just, I believe in self-care.
Can I just branch off with that a little bit? How would, as a board member, you go about implementing that?
One, I, I mean, I'm not being critical, but there is not, the trust, as I am in the community and people know I'm in, I was a, I'm a retired nurse practitioner, they'll say, you know what, I don't, I don't trust medicine anymore. So I think the first thing that we have to do is find a way to approach the community on the ideas of what we would propose on increasing the health and physical, the physical health as well as I also include the mental health in that. But in doing the physical health, a lot of times the mental health comes along. So I would say that we first have to kind of look at what happened during the COVID thing that everybody talks about, which is, and that really took the trust down. And I think we have to kind of admit that studies that were done in other countries and other places did show that masks were not required for children. Sweden had a beautiful thing where their kids went to school, they didn't have masks, and they were fine. I'm not saying COVID wasn't there, but we did not look at the data. There is data out there now, and that, the problem is it's all in the news, or it's, if you read, if you search for it. Like, the CDC knew that young boys who took the COVID vaccine were susceptible to cardiomyopathy. They didn't release it. So people know that. So I think it's going to be hard for the Health Department to come out without it first admitting that there were some studies out there, and however it's done, but it's done very, not on the cul-de-sac, but just we learned. And we're, we are going to have a new approach now of how we're going to make a decision rather than just, I mean, there was a mandate, but you're making, decisions were made without the studies being read. And I think if we can just reach the people, and there's always going to be some people who are going to poop pot, but I think the more honest we can be, and then ask what direction they want to go in, and we give them directions of like, how we would like to do it, I think the trust needs to be regained first before we even spend money on anything, because people won't do it.
Thank you. Commissioner Eberlein, did you want to ask question three?
What are you hungry to ask?
Question number three.
Number three, that's on the page.
Can I, can you imagine a circumstance in mandating a vaccine would be necessary?
I'm sorry, what did you say?
It's just a canned question.
Okay.
Can you imagine, I would do other questions. Can you imagine a quest, a circumstance when mandating a vaccine could be necessary?
Well, I would say, when you're looking at vaccines, if they're well researched, I think, I think they should be pushed. I mean, the polio vaccine was pushed, the DTAP, we all had to get them, but they were well researched. Now we're finding that, for example, the HPV virus that was pushed on young girls and even young boys is now causing problems. Well, the research, they didn't use enough, they didn't, it didn't go on long enough, and they didn't have enough in the study. So now we have people who are having problems because we pushed the vaccine. So I don't mind vaccines. I think they're good. They have saved lives. But, but you have to study them, and you have to have enough population of bins to say, you know, the benefit of this is better than not having it. And we didn't have it on that study, and that's a fairly, what, over maybe 10 years ago? No, 12 years ago that came out. So now, 12 years later, these girls are having, you know, uterine problems. So it's like, we pushed it, it was a good idea. I mean, the idea was good, but it was not researched enough, and it was not a long enough study, and it didn't have enough people in it. So I have no problems with vaccine. I believe them. I believe in them. The other thing is, is that the amount that we have, that we give children in the first years of their life, and what gets me is, most women are not breastfeeding now, so the immune that the child would get from the mother is not there. So now we're loading on vaccines in the first three years of their life, or, and it's too much to me. Give the same vaccines, but like, my question is, if you know the mother is not a drug addict, why are we given on the first day of, of the day of birth, a vitamin, not a vitamin, but a Hep B, a Hep B shot? I mean, Hep B is done for drugs. So if you know the dad, the mom is not in that environment, then why are we pushing hepatitis B in the first three months of their life? The first, the second, and the third month? And they both, they had vitamins, I mean, not vitamin B, but Hep B. So what, what is the purpose of that? I'm not saying that later on in life, when, when they get older, they have an immune system, and they're going to be out in the community, then I would say, is that me?
I think that's you.
Yes, it is. I'm sorry. So, so I think they should be distributed differently. I think meningitis is a good one, but why are we giving meningitis to a baby who basically isn't even in school yet? I have no objections to them. It's, I think it's the way we're giving them that is causing the problem and is making the parents back off.
Okay, thank you. Question number four. How will you keep the Board of County Commissioners apprised of the issues facing Panhandle Health District?
So how would I keep you apprised? So as people come to me, or?
Well, you know, as a board member, you would attend the board meetings.
Right.
You would know more of what is happening at Panhandle Health, the policies and so forth. So if you were on that board, how would you keep this board apprised as to what's going on over at Panhandle Health?
Well, this board as to what is going over on, over in Panhandle Health?
Exactly.
Okay. So looking at what they are discussing, what they are promoting, I would look for the research. And if the research validates what they want to do, I think it would be a good thing. If the research is not there, or it's a, it's not an adequate study, I would say, we need to be alerted to that.
Well, but how would you keep us informed as to what is happening at Panhandle Health?
So...
I mean, you know, what, in essence, you're here for us to nominate you to go on that board.
Got it.
Right? So we're the nominating body.
Right.
You go on this board, are we never going to hear from you again?
Oh, no.
Okay, so how would you keep us informed?
What is the communication process now?
Well, in some passports, I think it's been very limited to hardly anything. And so the question is, how would you want to keep us informed?
Well, I would want to keep you informed, I'm, that's kind of part of the problem right
Hi.
Hello. So we have a standard set of questions that we ask all the candidates.
there, I think. I would want to keep you informed with what is being discussed, what
Okay.
And there may be some additional questions that branch out as a result of your answers.
is coming down federally, what is coming down statewide. Is it, is it something that
Okay.
And so Commissioner Eberlein, did you want to start with question one?
is mandated, like the COVID shot and everything was, or is it definitely has to be done,
Let me get, let me get my paper out here.
and research the studies behind it? Is it effective before we spend money on it? And then I would just come to you.
Okay. Commissioner Duncan?
Can you imagine a circumstance when mandating a vaccine could be necessary?
Sure. Just, these are some housekeeping questions. Are you a citizen of the United
In today's world, I could see them trying, for sure. I don't know that, I think that
States?
Yes.
And have you been a resident of the state of Idaho and the Public Health District for one year?
Forty years, yes.
And then, are you a qualified elector? Are you registered to vote?
Yes.
Okay. Perfect.
Okay. Does anyone have any additional questions?
public would go along with it. It depends what it is and what it's for, but I do think
Okay.
No? Well, thank you very much.
Leave that on.
that everybody has a choice, and they should have a choice whether they want to vaccinate or not. I don't feel that mandates should be required.
Are you pro or con vaccine?
I'm definitely con.
Good. You passed my test.
Are you okay?
Did you want to branch out on that, or you just want to go to question one?
I'm going to question one. What is the role of the Panhandle Health District's Board of Health?
I believe that it's really for the public good. I feel that the board should be responsive to our community's needs, not necessarily what the communities around us are doing per se, but our, our hometown, what are our goals, interests, and how are they representing them, and being transparent with their decisions?
Thank you. Do you believe nutrition, prevention should fill a bigger role in Panhandle Health District's community development?
100%. I think that, I wouldn't really say, I don't want to say obesity, but definitely I feel that there is an issue, and the issue is more the fact that our community isn't educated. Yes, there are a lot of programs out there, but there are also programs that require money, so not all economics get to have this information. I think that there is, I think certain foods are very economical, but they're not necessarily good for you. And I don't think that our community is being taught what is truly in those foods.
How would you go about implementing something like that, a policy like that?
And I don't know that I would make it a policy as much as I would make it as an opportunity. Like, pilgrims is a great example. They offer classes for free to the public. Would they have doctors that come in, different types of nutritionists come in, give them free, you know, classes? I think that it would be a great opportunity for us to reach out to the leaders in our community and offer such programs.
So education?
Yeah.
Okay. Commissioner Eberlein, you want to ask question four?
How will you keep the Board of County Commissioners apprised of the issues facing Panhandle Health District?
Say that again. How?
How will you keep the Board of County Commissioners apprised of the issues facing Panhandle Health District?
I feel that all three of you are very easily accessed. I think you're probably on top of what's happening in our community. But again, transparency, and I feel that if, if I felt that there was a real issue, I would not have a problem reaching out to any one of you, asking for your help, your knowledge, your concern on the situation.
Thank you. Commissioner Duncan?
Just some housekeeping last items. Are you a United States citizen?
I am.
Have you been a resident of the state of Idaho and the Public Health District for one year?
Born and raised here.
And are you a qualified elector, meaning you're registered to vote?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
Any other questions? No? Thank you so much.
That was easy. I was so nervous too.
You did fine. You did fine.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I need no seat right there.
Okay. Mr. Washburn?
Yes, hello.
All right, welcome. We have a standard set of...
We have a standard set of questions that we ask all of the candidates. And I'll start. What is the role of the Panhandle Health District's Board of Health?
So I believe it's to promote the mission of the Panhandle Board of Health, which is to promote, prevent, and to ensure that the environmental and everything is good with the community. So that is the, the main goal of the Board of Health, is to support those in those positions that take care of the community.
Okay. Commissioner, let's see.
Sure.
Duncan? Okay.
Do you believe, do you believe that nutrition and/or prevention should fill a bigger role in Panhandle Health District's community development?
Yes, I do. I believe that nutrition is an important element in health and wellbeing for children and for adults, especially those who may be in lower income socioeconomic class, have difficulty getting that nutrition. Definitely, you know, you hear food as medicine oftentimes, and I feel like that's an important element of the public health, to ensure that food is readily available, especially nutritious food and healthy food.
Just out of curiosity, how would you go about implementing something like this, you know, for Panhandle Health?
Well, I think, you know, analyzing kind of where we're at as a, as a current state, and seeing where maybe food deserts exist, and where it's difficult for individuals to obtain healthy, healthy food as a first start. And then ensuring that there's opportunities for individuals to get, if it's coupons or some sort of, of, you know, receipts or something, that they can go to their local market. You know, there's obviously programs in place currently where that exists, where they can use EBT or other, other mechanisms to obtain healthy food. But I think, you know, analyzing the current situation, and then trying to formulate a plan or strategy on how you can improve that would be the next step.
Okay. Commissioner Eberlein, did you want to ask number three?
Can you imagine a circumstance when mandating a vaccine could be necessary?
I believe that vaccine mandates should be only man, only used when the science is very crystal clear on the efficacy of the vaccines. For instance, polio. There are, you know, there have been instances in my own personal and professional experiences where we have been, you know, asked and used, and used as a, as a resource to promote mandated vaccines like COVID. That is something that I don't believe the science supported at the time. But I do think that there are instances where, you know, mandated vaccines are good for the community. So, but the science has to support it. And I, I do think that you need rigorous scientific data to support a mandated vaccine. Otherwise, you should not infringe upon individuals' rights to, to have mandated vaccines.
So we had a period of time, not so long in the near future, or the, and we had mandated vaccines. And so those people thought it was all good. So how do we, how do we justify and identify if, if vaccines are mandated and they're healthy and safe?
Yeah, I think the, you know, you have to rely on the sa, on the science. You know, I, I think at the time, you know, they were saying that the science, that the science was supporting the vaccine, but now we're coming, they're coming out, and they're saying that there may be holes within that argument. I think there is, there is a line between infringing on individuals' personal rights and, and what they accept into their body, and mandating a vaccine for a, a new virus or a new disease that mutates so rapidly that a vaccine may not be efficacious, efficacious at all, or efficient at all, right? And I do think that you need some really, really, really good data to support a mandate. Otherwise, I think education is the route you take. And you educate patients on the science that you have. And if the science that you have is that it's looking like it's a promising vaccine, then I think that's the data you give, you give to, to your constituents. Otherwise, I don't think a mandate is required, but I think education is the route to go.
Thank you. Excuse me. How will you keep the Board of County Commissioners apprised of the issues facing Panhandle Health District?
Well, I think communication is a key element. And one thing that I always say, you know, in my own professional working life, is that if you're over-communicating, you're probably hitting the sweet spot. So I feel like there's a lot of mechanisms, a lot of channels for communication, through email, meetings, face-to-face meetings, you know, phone calls. All of those things are important mechanisms to promote that communication, that channel communication. I think it goes back to also how you prefer to be communicated to. If you prefer, you know, just a weekly newsletter, or if you prefer, you know, an email, if you, how you prefer that communication is really important. And so that's what I would take into account, is how you prefer. But I do think constant communication on how the Panhandle is doing, and things that are coming about into the near future, and keeping you apprised of, of things that maybe aren't necessarily here yet, but will be here, could be here, those potential things, so you can get out ahead of it and not be surprised. And I think that's the, the key element that I would emphasize, is no surprises.
Thank you. Commissioner Duncan?
Yeah, just a couple of housekeeping items. And I did see that you mentioned this in your letter, but I just need to ask for the record. Are you a United States citizen?
Yes.
And then, have you been a resident of the state of Idaho in the Public Health District for one year?
Yes.
And how long have you been here?
I've been here for nearly two years.
Two years. Okay. And are you a qualified elector?
Yes.
Are you registered to vote?
Yes, I am registered to vote, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Well, thank you so much for coming in.
Hey, I thank you. Thank you. Appreciate your time. Hi, yes.
Welcome.
Thank you.
We have a standard set of questions that we ask, ask all the candidates.
Okay.
So I'll start off here. What is the role of the Panhandle Health District's Board of Health?
The, the role of the Board of Health is to supervise environmental health safety, prevent disease transmission, and also manage health code to protect the aquifer. There's a broad spectrum, including even supervising the Superfund sites, like up in Bunker Hill, and doing a lot of the... And I think that's the, the key element that I would emphasize is no surprises.
Thank you. Commissioner, uh, Duncan?
Uh, yeah, just a couple of housekeeping items. And I did see that you mentioned this in your letter, um, but I just need to ask for the record. Are you a United States citizen?
Yes.
And then have you been a resident of the state of Idaho in the Public Health District for one year?
Yes.
And how long have you been here?
Uh, I've been here for nearly two years.
Two years, okay. And are you a qualified elector? Are you registered to vote?
Yes, I am registered to vote, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Well, thank you so much for coming in.
Hey, I thank you. Thank you, appreciate your time.
Mr. Nolan?
Hi, yes.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Uh, we have a, a standard set of questions that we ask, uh, ask all the candidates. So I'll start off here. Um, what is the role of the Panhandle Health District's Board of Health?
The, the role of the Board of Health is to supervise, um, environmental health safety, prevent disease transmission, uh, and also, um, manage, uh, health code to protect the aquifer. There's a broad spectrum of, including even supervising the, um, Superfund sites like up in Bunker Hill and doing a lot of the management on that, uh, as well as, um, you know, providing community services and clinical health services in the community. So, and doing it in a way that tries to optimize, uh, you know, community, public health, along with individual health and individual health freedom, and trying to figure out the balance between the two of those. So it's actually quite a really broad group of responsibilities that it seems that it's tasked with.
Thank you. Who would like to ask the next question?
Can I ask? Do you believe that nutrition, I'm sorry, did you say?
Go ahead, I'll do the next one then.
Okay. Uh, do you believe nutrition, uh, and/or prevention should fill a bigger role in Panhandle Health District's community development?
Yes, I absolutely do. I think, um, as far as working with both community health, whether it's, uh, most of the chronic diseases that we're facing as a country, um, or, and also emotional and mental health. I think nutrition is a foundation that when, um, the education and the follow-through for helping people optimize their nutrition, you end up clearing out a lot of the fog of health-related issues that, uh, can often distract medical providers and try to figure out how to help people get better. Uh, and then once the nutrition is dialed in and digestion's dialed in along with that, you kind of are left with the core set of the actual medical problems that need to be addressed more medically rather than just nutrition. But I think all the way from kids, um, with issues with ADD and other emotional issues and outbreak issues and needing special ed, a lot of that can be addressed nutritionally. And then whatever is left then can be addressed usually a lot easier and with less higher force interventions. Um, and then also even with, uh, substance abuse and, uh, and, uh, cravings and all of that. Uh, if you get the nutrition correct and you feed the brain correctly, uh, based off of individual nutrition needs, uh, then a lot of times the craving, uh, issues can diminish dramatically such that people that would otherwise, uh, go into substance abuse can, uh, avoid it with that and some lifestyle and maybe counseling and that sort of thing. So I feel that there's, um, it's critical. And it's also critical for the immune system. So if we're talking about the, uh, the, the Board's role on also trying to reduce, uh, like pandemic disease transmission and also, um, some of the things that currently, you know, even that are on the vaccine schedule that are trying to prevent and measles and mumps is providing proper nutrition allows your immune system to then fight viruses and bacteria in an appropriate way, which then decreases the frequency that people are going to need to go to the hospital for like during COVID for respiratory therapy and, and other very expensive therapies that then, uh, also increase their risk of, of morbidity and mortality. And so I think that nutrition is at the foundation of all of that. Obviously, we're very thankful for, you know, various medicines and drugs and things when necessary. But I think without the nutrition piece, a lot of times you're, you're, you're having to do much more, uh, Herculean-type, uh, inputs to try to get people's health corrected. And even then sometimes it can't be without it, so, yeah.
And you, you agree with it. So how would you propose that Panhandle Health implement something like that?
Yeah, I think, um, well, I think part of it is, I mean, education is one of the most critical parts of it because a lot of people eat things that don't even know, uh, why they're eating it or that it's bad for them. So I think the first start is to, is to build a comprehensive awareness amongst, I think, starting with kids, because kids often influence their parents positively when they get educated on, on health and nutrition. I think, uh, integrating into the, um, you know, the, the at-risk youth programs and all of that where they learn how to take responsibility for the food that they, that they eat and why certain foods, uh, will make them feel worse and make them get sick easier. So I think education's a huge part of it, uh, on that. Uh, and then, um, I'm not sure, I don't think that there's a lot of connection that I've seen in my research that with, like, uh, like the food stamp program or the SNAP program or stuff like that. I know that's, seems to be more of a, of a state or federal level issue. But, um, you know, I do like what Senator Kennedy's recently talked about, about trying to remove junk food from food that can be purchased when there's, uh, in, during, with nutrition program money. Um, I think addressing the, uh, the actual nutrition at the schools is critical because that's what they get daily is what they're going to get used to and accustomed to. So they, going into and trying to figure out how do we do it from, from the schools, from what's allowed to be purchased in, in food nutrition programs, as well as, um, you know, I, I think it's critically education because if you don't know, then you do things out of whatever you're told from the media stuff. So, so I think that that's a big part of it.
Commissioner Everline?
This, this, um, probably be redundant. Can you imagine the circumstance when mandating a vaccine could be necessary?
I would say, I am not, I, no, no, I can't. I think that ultimately in the United States of America, we need to be able to have freedom to choose one way or the other. I feel that there can be potentially good arguments for certain vaccines, given certain very simple, you know, limited situation. But I think the compulsion of any vaccination should be a never, ever thing. Um, I feel that, uh, that, so say an example would be, there's like a hepatitis B vaccine. There are certain families of certain cultural backgrounds that where hepatitis B can be endemic and maybe a, an elderly parent or grandparent that has hepatitis B is caring for the kid. Then in that situation, the parents may choose to do like hepatitis B vaccine for their child, but other kids don't need that if they're not going to be exposed to that. So I think as far as a mandate type of thing, I don't see that as, as a thing that should ever be mandated.
You're telling me more than I want to know.
Sorry.
No, that's good.
Yeah.
Commissioner Duncan?
How will you keep the Board of County Commissioners apprised of the issues facing Panhandle Health District?
Well, I think establishing like a regular routes of communication and/or update meeting could be a good idea. I'm not aware currently of how previous, um, previously it's been done. Uh, but I think figuring out how to, um, have a regular, uh, connection with you guys to make sure that issues that you're seeing, um, that you want to have implemented in the county to support public health and all of that is, is that we're all on the same page and able to work together. Because, so I think that the main thing would be is regular, consistent, honest communication where, um, you guys can speak completely honestly and freely, which I need to, and, uh, and then vice versa. And then we kind of work out that kind of communication would be, would be the goal. I think, uh, there could be other more technical things where you, where we implement like, um, meeting update, where you get like a, a bullet point of every meeting that's summarized with details so that if there's something you want more information on, you could then say, hey, can you tell me more about this specifically? Something that's efficient because everyone's busy with their time. But I think in-person meetings and then maybe regular, just automatic, uh, summary of what's going on. And then you guys could send me back, hey, this is something we're concerned about. Can we communicate that?
Okay. Uh, this last question is, uh, basically, have you met the minimum requirements to sit on the Health District Board? And this is per Idaho code. And the first one is, are you a United States citizen?
I am.
And have you been a resident of the state of Idaho and the Public Health District for at least one year?
I have.
And are you a qualified elector? Can you vote?
I can.
Are, are you registered to vote?
Registered in, uh, yeah, yes, in, uh, Kootenay.
Perfect. And then just, how long have you been a resident of Kootenay County?
Technically, as far as when it first started, I'm not totally sure. I've been here since twenty June twenty-one. Uh, I, I imagine that's when the first state is, or I'm not sure if it's when I got my driver's license, which was like a month or two after that.
Twenty twenty-one.
Twenty, yeah, June twenty-twenty-one, so.
Okay. Any other questions?
Good.
No? Thank you so much for coming in.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Yes, let's go into executive session.
Okay. I move that we enter into executive session pursuant to Idaho Code seven four two oh six one A.
Second?
Commissioner Everline?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chair Matarri?
Aye.